Okay, let me know when I can go ahead. We're good?
You could go ahead.
Okay, thank you. May we rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first order of business, I would like to administer the oath of office to the superintendent. Okay. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools of the East Meadow Union Preschool District to the best of your ability?
I will.
I declare you duly installed. Okay, next, I would like to administer the oath to the newly re-elected board members. We'll start with Alisa. Okay, if you can raise your right hand. Okay, and, okay, good. You're unmuted. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties as trustee of the Board of Education of the East Meadow Union Preschool District to the best of your ability?
Yes.
I declare you duly installed. And then, Dr. Eckers? Okay. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties as trustee of the Board of Education of the East Meadow Union Preschool District to the best of your ability?
Yes.
I declare you duly installed. Thank you both. Okay, next. Do we have nominations for president of the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate Matthew Melnick.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Any other nominations? Okay, Mr. Melnick for president. All in favor?
I think we have to, you have to call out names, Jeanie.
Okay, so, Alisa?
You're muted. Sorry, I couldn't unmute for some reason. Yes.
Okay. Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
I didn't hear. Was that me? I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Allison Benowitz?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
That was a no? Okay. Melissa Tell?
Yes.
Me? And Eileen Napolitano?
No.
Okay, so we have... Oh, and...
I'll vote yes.
I see a vote yes. Okay, so five yes. Two no. Okay. So that, does it need to be unanimous?
No.
No.
Okay.
I'm starting.
So, Mr. Melnick, president of the Board of Education.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Vice President of the Board, do we have a nomination?
I nominate Alisa Baruch.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay. Mr. Melnick?
Yes.
Ms. Luze? Dr. Luze, sorry.
All good, yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Allison Benowitz? Allison? Benowitz?
I think she's frozen.
Yeah.
Okay. Melissa Tell?
Yes.
Eileen Napolitano?
Yes.
And Alisa Baruch?
All right.
Alisa Baruch for Vice President of the Board of Education. Okay, and I would like to administer the oath. Okay, Mr. Melnick? Okay, do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties as president of the Board of Education of the East Meadow Union Preschool District to the best of your ability?
Yes.
I declare you duly installed.
Thank you.
And Alisa Baruch? Okay, do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge Vice President of the Board of Education of the East Meadow Union Preschool District to the best of your ability?
Yes.
I declare you duly installed. Congratulations, everyone. Okay, and I will hand it over to Mr. Melnick.
Thank you very much, Ms. Puma. And the first item is next, a motion to approve Jeanie Puma as district clerk. Would someone like to make that motion? Dr. Eckers, second. Dr. Luze. Any discussion, other than the fact that Ms. Puma did an amazing job on this year's election? I'm gonna go down the list. Ms. Baruch?
Thank you.
Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz? Excellent, thank you, and congratulations, Ms. Puma.
Thank you.
I will do your swearing-in after the meeting, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. Next is a motion to appoint the district treasurer, Joan Franciotti. Would someone like to make that motion? Ms. Baruch, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. We have that and that. Next is a motion to appoint Ingraham Smith LLP as school general counsel for the 2020-21 school year. Would someone like to make that motion? Ms. Tell, second. Ms. Baruch, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz? Ms. Benowitz? I got you. And with me makes seven, nothing. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve Ingraham Smith as labor counsel for the 2020-21 school year? Dr. Luze, second. Dr. Eckers, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. And me makes seven, nothing. Just, I know there are people trying to get in. We're beyond capacity at this point for what Zoom permits, but the meeting is being recorded, so you will be able to view it at a different time. You could let people know if they're trying to get in, they can keep trying, and maybe they'll be able to get in as other people slip out, but if they want to watch, it will be recorded and available later, and if they wanted to ask any questions during the next meeting, they could always email the board if they're unable to get in. Moving next is the, is to approve bond counsel. Would someone like to make a motion to approve Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood LLP as bond counsel? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Luze? Any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And me is seven, nothing. Thank you very much. Would someone like to make a motion to approve capital markets to provide financial advisory services to the district? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Luze, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And myself makes seven, nothing. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to approve Cohen and Denoski LLP as independent auditor for the district? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Luze, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz? And me makes seven, nothing. Thank you. Next is a motion to authorize the superintendent of schools to act on behalf of the district for impartial hearing officers as needed in connection with 504 matters. Would someone like to make that motion? Dr. Eckers, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And myself makes seven, nothing. Thank you. We got you. Thank you. Next is a motion to approve that the president, vice president of the board shall be authorized to appoint impartial hearing officers as set forth in the commissioner's regulation from the State Department of Education rotational list. Would someone like to make that motion? Dr. Eckers, second. Dr. Luze, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz? And myself makes seven, nothing. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Benowitz. Next on the agenda is a motion to approve the district committee and subcommittee on special education membership, as well as the committee on preschool, special education, and 504 committees for the period of July 2020 through August 2020, to August 2021. As attached, there's an attachment that we have on the agenda. Would someone like to make that motion? Dr. Luze, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz? Thank you. And myself is seven, nothing. Can we do procedural issues as a... Yes, right? As a consent?
May I make a recommendation that you call each of the items and then move, make a motion to approve all as a consent? Just so that our audience knows what it is that the board is approving?
Yes, so we're going to make a motion to approve procedural resolutions I, 1 through 20 of the procedural resolutions consent agenda. That includes Board of Education meetings agendas, Board of Education president's sole liaison with the district council, Board of Education president's authority to schedule meetings with council and the Board of Education, superintendent of schools, and/or designees may contact council. Suggested agenda items will be communicated through the Board of Education president. Addition, deletion, modification, and/or postponement of agenda items. Board of Education's signature on contracts, Public Officers Law 18, senior citizens exemptions, persons with disabilities and limited income, volunteer firefighters' real property tax exemption, veterans exemption, Cold War veterans' real property tax exemption, home improvement exemption, health services, continuing education, facsimile electronic signatures, facsimile signatures on district checks, and the date for annual meetings and registration. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, can someone make the motion?
Okay.
Dr. Eckers, second. Dr. Luze, now, any discussion?
I have a just, I think there's an error in something, just a typo. I just want to make sure that I'm not looking at this wrong. On 20, the date, it says May 19th, 2020. Is that supposed to be 2021?
The date of the annual meeting.
It's actually gonna be May 18th, 2021.
Yeah, we need to fix that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Eckers.
Send us that she'll fix it.
Yep, as amended on, on number 20.
May 18th, 2021, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'm fixing it right now.
Thank you, Ms. Resenda. So... If there's no further discussion, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And myself makes seven, nothing. Thank you.
Second on that one? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm waiting.
The motion and the second on that one?
Oh, motion was Dr. Eckers, second was Dr. Luze.
And then seven, zero.
Correct.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
All, all is well. Thank you. Next is the designation of official depositories, being Bank of America, Capital One Bank, and First National Bank of Long Island. Would someone like to make him, no? No, I jumped. I'm sorry. Other appointments? I'm just kidding. Someone like to make a motion to be resolved that the, in the absence of the superintendent of schools for illness or other reason, the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Administration shall serve as acting superintendent of schools? Ms. Tell, second. Ms. Baruch, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz? Ms. Benowitz?
I guess she's frozen.
No, she, she just came back on. Ms. Benowitz, it's to you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And with me, that's seven, nothing.
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual appointments as listed below? I'm not going to read through all of this.
Yeah.
This list, but it's the secretaries and other coordinators for, for the district.
Yeah.
And would someone like to make that motion? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Luze, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
That's a yes.
We got a yes, okay. Thank you, I wasn't up on my screen, thank you. And with me, that's seven, nothing.
You forgot me, but that's a yes, too.
I meant Ms. Tell in between somewhere there. I even wrote this down on a list, I'm sorry, Melissa.
Ms. Benowitz answered for both of us on the index card, it's okay.
Fair enough. Next motion is to appoint the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance to authorize, as authorized, as the school's district purchasing agent. Someone like to make that motion? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Luze, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
And Ms. Benowitz? Yes, okay, thank you. And with me, that's seven, nothing. Would someone like to make a motion to appoint Gregory Vitari, Stacy Breslin, Maria Sierra Mataro, Kerry Dunn, Rich Howard, James Lethbridge, Jamie Mack, Kelly DiScalfani, and Timothy Vols as certified, qualified lead evaluators of classroom teachers, having successfully completed the requirements prescribed in Education Law 3012D? And further resolve that Dr. Kenneth Acard Jr., Anthony Russo, and Dr. David Casaminto are hereby certified as qualified lead evaluators of principals, having successfully completed the requirements prescribed in Educational Law 3012D. Someone like to make that motion? Ms. Tell, second. Dr. Luze, any discussion? Then, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me is seven, nothing. Thank you. Moving on now to where we were with designations. A motion to approve Bank of America, Capital One Bank, and the First National Bank of Long Island's official depositories for the district. Someone like to make that motion? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Eckers, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me is seven, nothing. Thank you. Someone please make a motion to approve the East Meadow Herald, the East Meadow Beacon, the Westbury Times, and Newsday as the official newspapers for dissemination of district legal notices, news, et cetera. Dr. Luze, second. Second. Ms. Baruch, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
And Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me, that's seven, nothing. Thank you. Next is a motion to authorize the district treasurer in conjunction with the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel Administration to certify payrolls. Would someone like to make that motion? Dr. Luze, second. Second, Dr. Eckers, thank you. Any discussion? Nope, okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
Thank you, and with me, that's seven, nothing. Would someone like to make a motion to appoint Syntax Communications through a contract with Nassau Bocees as the district's public relations firm? Dr. Luze, second. Ms. Baruch? Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes, please.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me is seven, nothing. Thank you. I'm sorry for any delays, guys. I'm switching from screen to screen to, to get all of you as I'm going through. Next is another consent agenda item for authorizations. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the authorizations, oh, I'm sorry, that the superintendent of schools or the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance implementing budget transfers for the fiscal year? Well, this is just, let me run down all of them. How's that? Right? I'll do it like I did the others. So, budget transfers, federal title grants, investment surplus funds, reserve review, collective bargaining, petty cash, stipends, petty cash for Cape, employment contracts, cell phones, credit cards, and annual dues. Someone like to make a motion to approve those consent agenda items? What is it, L 1 through 12, please? Dr. Luze, second. Ms. Tell, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Hit the wrong button, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
And Ms. Benowitz? Thank you, and that's seven, nothing. Next is the adoption of religious holidays. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the use of such days for religious observances may be selected by the school administration for the purpose of adjusting average daily attendance of pupils in the district, as well as days for religious observance to be recognized by the Board of Education as specific school days for which absence for religious observances may be excused to be included in the district's calendar. Dr. Luze, second. Dr. Eckers, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me is seven, nothing. Thank you. Are we able to do the adoption of policies as one, or should we do them separate? We'll do them as one? Great. Would someone like to make a motion to re-adopt the policies and code of conduct? It's for the adoption of all of our policies, for the adoption of the code of conduct, as well as the exposure control plan. Would someone like to make that motion? Ms. Baruch, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luze?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And myself makes seven, nothing. Thank you. Someone like to make a resolution, make a motion to appoint the... Someone like to make a motion to appoint the superintendent of schools or Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance to be authorized to affix his or her signature for all claims submitted for reimbursement under the National School Lunch Program? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And myself is seven, nothing. Thank you.
Forgive me, Mr. Melnick, but going back to item number N, you did the policies, but we still have the re-adoption of the code of conduct and re-adoption of the exposure of control plan.
I thought we did that all as one. If we need to do it separate, we can do it separate.
Yeah, we have to do it separately. They're each action item. Sorry.
Nope, nope.
I thought you meant all policies at the same time, yeah.
Oh, no, I wasn't gonna go through all thousands of policies. All right, so let's come back now to the, we did the policies, we'll do the adoption of the code of conduct. Someone like to make a motion to re-adopt the code of conduct? Ms. Baruch, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And myself is seven, nothing. And if we could also now do the re-adoption of the exposure control plan, someone like to make a motion to approve that? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Baruch, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And myself is seven, nothing. Thank you. We now have done the school lunch program, so we'll drop down to the free and reduced lunches. Resolve that the following individuals be designated officials in the Free and Reduced Lunch Program: Christine Bauer, Patrick Pizzo, and Jennifer Fressenda. Someone like to make that motion, please? Ms. Tell, second. Dr. Luce, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz? And myself is seven, nothing. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to approve the resolution regarding hepatitis B exposure? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Luce, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And Ms. Benowitz? Thank you. And with me, that's seven, nothing.
Matt, who is, who did the motion in the second on that one?
Ms. Baruch did the motion, Dr. Luce did the second.
And seven, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Conferences, Resolution to approve the superintendent of schools or as designate to be authorized to approve staff attendance at conferences and workshops. Dr. Eckers, second. Ms. Baruch, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And seven, nothing with me. And I went in the right order that time. Not bad. Next is a resolution that board members may attend the National School Boards Association Conference, the New York State School Boards 2020 Summer Law Institute, and the New York State School Boards Association Annual Conference, as well as any other conference that board members may wish to attend, subject to the approval of the board. Dr. Luce, second. Dr. Eckers, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yeah.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me, that's seven, nothing. Thank you. Next is a resolution that the superintendent of schools may attend all New York State conferences and workshops, as well as the American Association of School Administration, the Association of Supervisors for Curriculum Development, and the National School Board Association conferences, as well as other out-of-state conferences that the superintendent of schools may wish to attend, subject to the approval of the board. Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And myself makes seven, nothing. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution that the Board of Education will meet as a committee of the whole to consider business and facilities, education, personnel matters, policies, and school safety and transportation. Board members will be assigned by the president to chair such matters to the Board of Education that are appropriate according to the following subject matters. And we have that business will be Ms. Benowitz, facilities, Dr. Eckers, education, Ms. Baruch, personnel, Ms. Benowitz, policies, Dr. Luce, school safety and transportation, Ms. Tell, and the district-wide safety, district-wide school safety team, Ms. Napolitano. And the board will, board president will act as ex officio of all committees. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Matt.
Was that a yes? Yeah, right? And myself makes seven, nothing. Thank you.
Sometime this evening, I think, Alisa, you collected those names. Can you send them to us?
Yes.
I have a list, yeah.
You have a list? Thanks.
I have the list. I'll email it to you later.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Board of Education Committees. Well, this is the same one, right? So next is the Access Committee?
Yes.
So a resolution that the Access Committee and the Curriculum Committee will be attended by a Board of Education designate of the Education Committee. Someone like to make that motion? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Baruch, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And myself is seven, nothing. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to, that the Board of Education Audit Committee meet for pre- and post-audit review with independent auditors? No, what am I missing, Dr. Card? No, not me. Okay, good. Someone like to make that motion? Ms. Baruch, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me is seven, nothing. Thank you. Next is the PTA Liaison Representative, a motion to appoint Alisa Baruch as Board Trustee to represent the Board of Education at PTA as PTA liaison for this school year. Someone like to make that motion? Dr. Eckers, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yep.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yeah.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz? And with me is seven, nothing. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion that when necessary, the president will also appoint such committees as are necessary to conduct studies on special matters? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And me is seven, nothing. A motion to establish a school safety and transportation committee for the school year. Someone like to make that motion? Ms. Baruch, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me is seven, nothing. And then a resolution to establish a district-wide school safety team for the school year and appoint members of the team. Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me is seven, nothing. And just like that, we are reorganized like we've never been reorganized before, virtually. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn our reorganization for the 2021 school year? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Baruch? Any discussion? Good. Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And I am seven, nothing. Thank you all very much. I will see you in five seconds while I pull up the next meeting. And Ms. Fressenda, let me know when you're ready as well. Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna do the pledge again. So let's all rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Card, for the flag. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes from our meeting on May 27, 2020? Ms. Tell, second. Ms. Baruch? Any discussion?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Is Ms. Napolitano still with us? Nope.
She is.
There she is. Ah, Alina, you're back. We're approving the minutes from the May 27, 2020 board meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Luce?
Yes.
And Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
Thank you. And with me, that's seven, nothing. The next items on the agenda are all for our information items that were presented to us previously. It is the Budget Appropriations Report for the General Fund of May 2020, the budget transfers over 5,000 for the same period, the revenue status reports, cash receipts for school lunch of May 2020, and the warrants for May 2020. Is there any questions or discussions regarding those items?
Matt, I had a question.
Please.
Forgive me, when I was going over the budget transfers, I just wanted to question if you could please explain the budget transfer, the Cape budget transfer?
Hold on, I'm pulling it up.
Okay. It was done in May, I believe. I forget the date, but was it May 4? May 4, thank you. Was it the possibility that Cape was gonna run? Is that what it was?
It says it was for supply.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I knew, I know that Cape didn't run. That's all.
Right.
Thank you.
Is it a transfer away from or to Cape? I think it's away from.
To Cape. Oh, then I misread it.
It's probably to Cape. It was in preparation for, Jen has something to say. Go ahead, Jen.
So they usually purchase a bunch of the supplies for the summer, such as t-shirts and things that they need to start day one. So that's what the transfer was for. However, obviously Cape is not running.
Right.
Okay.
Those t-shirts aren't gonna expire, are they?
I don't think they were even able to purchase them, so I think we're good.
It's okay. They don't put the year on it, so it's good for next year.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Fressenda. I appreciate it for your adding that in. The next item for action is salary changes. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the salary changes?
Now, we didn't vote on the budgets, because I
We don't.
We don't. It's a I apologize.
Nope, you're good. So, I'm sorry, salary changes, motion. Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Eckers, any discussion? Ms. Baruch? Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And myself is seven, nothing. Next is the Treasurers' Report for May 2020. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report from that time? Dr. Eckers, second. Ms. Baruch, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me is seven, nothing. Thank you. Next is Communications and Announcements. I thank all of you who are joining us tonight via Zoom. We were scheduled to have this meeting live, which would have been a whole, whole other scenario. But the governor at, I think it was 8:45 last night, extended his executive order providing for Zoom meetings. I don't know how many people are in our meeting right now. It looks like the full 100. We're full up. Unfortunately, we can't provide for more space here. I just sort of also want to note, if we were doing this live at the Salisbury Center, I can guarantee you 100 people would not be in the Salisbury Center right now, because we wouldn't be allowed to have more than 25 people in the building at that point. So while I know there are people who aren't here, who are trying to get into this meeting, it's just technologically not available to us right now. That being said, we are recording this meeting so that anyone who wants to watch the meeting after the fact, as well as our previous meeting, which was the reorganization meeting, you can absolutely find those recordings. They will be available after the case. And if it was someone who wanted to speak tonight, we can always be reached via our email accounts, boe@emufsd.us at any time, and we will get back to you in a timely manner. Are there any other board member announcements? Okay, with that, Dr. Card, do you have a superintendent's announcement tonight?
You're muted.
Never at a loss for words. I know that there's been many concerns out there in the public regarding reopening of school. While tonight, we're going to make a presentation on the work that has been done by numerous committees in the district regarding contemplating what reopening and reentry might look like. We are flying a plane in the dark in that the governor's office nor the state education department has not provided us with any guidance to date in terms of how we shall reopen. While planning for reopening may be a local decision, the ultimate decision of how we reopen will be left up to the governor and NYSCD. Tonight, during our discussion or presentation portion, we're going to provide the board with a brief overview of some of the things that we have looked at, talked about, discussed with several committees, and where we currently are in terms of planning for reopening. The discussion conversation related to reopening is ongoing and will continue throughout the summer. Hopefully, the governor will not provide us with direction and guidance at 8:45 on August 31st. We hope that guidance will be forthcoming in the not-too-distant future. So I share that in the hopes that we, as a community, can work together to do what will be hopefully best interest of all of our kids as well as the staff in the East Meadow School community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Card. Next is the first public commentary section. The Board of Education conducts meetings to which the public is invited. At these meetings, the board conducts the legally required work with respect to our East Meadow Schools community. The tentative agenda is an outline of what the board intends to address during the session. It may be modified or adjusted as necessary and is intended to assist the public to follow what item is being addressed. Agendas will also be posted online on the district website before each session. The Board of Education will set aside some time during the session for public comment, questions, or remarks. The first public commentary section, which is now reserved for agenda items only. The second public commentary is for open items. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and we will end the session upon the earlier of 30 minutes or no one else seeking to address the board. If you don't get to speak tonight or don't feel comfortable speaking tonight, you can always email us at that boe@emufsd.us address, and we will get back to you or someone will get back to you in a timely manner. Again, items for this session are only for items on the agenda. If you would like to speak, if you could please use the raise hand feature in Zoom, and Ms. Baruch will call upon you to unmute your microphone at that time. So is there anyone here who would like to discuss a agenda item?
Yes, we have Mr. Lakoe.
Okay, Mr. Lakoe, welcome. Oh, before you go, Mr. Lakoe, and I'm sorry, for those of you who are posting in the chat, unfortunately, we can't respond through the chat feature because it's not recorded as part of the meeting and open meetings laws. So if you would like to ask a question, we ask that you do so in the proper commentary section. Or obviously, you can email us, and we'd be happy to provide any response. Thank you, and I'm sorry, Mr. Lakoe, I used up 35 seconds of your time.
All right, I'm going to be as quick as I possibly can. So obviously, tonight I'm going to comment on a board agenda item of reopening. I want to be clear from the start. I want school to open in September. But in the words of Keith Richards and Mick Jagger, we can't always get what we want. What I often find was overlooked is their next line of that song is, but if you try sometimes, you'll find you'll get what you need. I can't help but think that if we, as a community, try, we will get what we need for our students. Trying is going to come in many forms. It's going to be a mask. It's going to be hand hygiene. It's going to be social distancing. Trying is also going to have to be about a measured response by us as parents. Schools are going to announce their plans about what the fall looks like. The state's going to approve, not approve, who knows, like Dr. Card said, hopefully not at the 11th hour, but I don't think we count on that. We have to be positive. We have to discuss our anger or sadness about this in private and shield our kids. As many of you know, on the board, I've been looking at this problem for months. Almost as soon as the state made the unilateral decision to close schools, one minute I think I've got it solved with pods or kids behaving in a semi-quarantine circle and classes being together, and then the next minute, that goes all out the window because I'm going to put the 20 other questions I can answer it. I find a way to solve that with small groups. I move into the next question, which I haven't really been able to get past, is what's going to happen when an adult or grown-up tests positive? And it's going to happen, hopefully not in our school district, but somewhere in the 700 school districts in the state of New York, it's going to happen. And we're going to have to plan to deal with that. Are we going to do forced testing for readmission medically, legally? I don't know about that. How is isolation pending a test? What does our ability to engage in contact tracing look like? And I know a lot of this is outlined in the presentation. Again, as Dr. Card so eloquently pointed out during his remarks, we don't know. No guidance from Uncle Howie, from the governor, from SED, nothing. So I'm proposing that parents have to kind of do something that I'm going to probably say is going to be very unpopular with people. It's going to have to be starting to make our own plans. And people have asked me, John, you know, you work in healthcare. You have a good understanding. Your company's really active with what's going on with the virology and the clinical trials. So my advice to people is right now, plan that you're going to be back at work full-time, and your kid's going to be engaged in distant nursing. And hopefully, if we try with our masks and our distancing and our hand hygiene, we can adjust up from there. But if we sit on our laurels waiting for Albany, it's going to be too late. I sent all the members of the board a piece that Dr. Josh Jaffrestein from the Hopkins School of Public Health, he's one of the deans, said, "We need to get schools open, but we're only going to be able to do that if we do this, if we just try." The next year is going to take the actual and metaphorical village to raise our kids. We will need allowances for in-distance mode. We'll need to have alliances with our neighbors, our friends, and create quarantine circles and act as a smaller village. And then we're going to need our village to try as a whole to act responsibly, to do the things that we need to do in order to safely open our schools. I know that I was getting up here with a probably very unpopular take, and I could probably see everybody getting fairly angry at me at this point. But I think that we need to really be honest about what things look like moving forward. I've reiterated to many of you privately, I'm happily to continue to share my data. You probably won't have a choice. I'll probably continue emailing it out to everybody. That's just how I am when I get a hot take from something.
Mr. Lakoe, that's your three, my friend.
I'm done. My last sentence is, if you need me, I'm here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lakoe.
The next person to want to speak is named Felicity. I don't have a last name. It just says Felicity.
Okay. Ms. Felicity, if you want to unmute yourself?
Hi, this is Kevin Fitzpatrick. Felicity's my daughter.
Excellent, thank you.
My question is, is why is the board not considering alternate classrooms like trailers and things like that? Or using schools that are closed to spread the kids out?
We don't have any closed schools is one. And just, Dr. Card, please go ahead. Well, I was going to say, you know, all of this is, you know, we have this plan coming out today that I know people have seen because we put it out there. The plan was required, and we were told by state ed, you need to submit a plan without any guidance necessarily of what we're going to be able to do come September. So while this plan is out there, it's because it was required to be submitted by state ed, but not necessarily regarding any specific guidelines that we're going to get other than what's in place at this time right now. And as we've all seen, guidelines have been changing on an almost daily basis, especially as things start opening up. So for us to say, this is what we're going to be able to do in September, I think is really jumping the gun, knowing that next week, the governor may say, well, you can't do this, this, and this now. So we're sort of throwing something up into the atmosphere of, here's a plan because we were required to submit a plan, but without the specific guidance from the state as to what they're going to require come first day of school.
But it seems to me that it's more like you're taking the easy way out of having kids come to school two days a week than not being in school when you can easily just bring in trailers like they do in a lot of the overcrowded schools and split the kids up and have them come in every day. We have a lot of parents that are going to be working, and you're saying, raise the kids in a village. We can make these little villages, the classrooms, and have six or eight kids stay together and be together as that village. It just seems to me that the board is really not doing anything to help the parents. Because if I can say, I think the distance earning this past four months was a disaster. It was the worst I've ever seen. And we actually homeschooled our child and signed her up with a homeschooling program because she got zero help. There was zero help for her, and I just see that happening again. She's kindergarten, going to first grade now.
Go ahead, Dr. Luce.
I was just going to say, the perfect example of the governor undoing is Phil de Blasio announces that he's going to open. The governor says, "Not so fast." And the other piece that I want to speak to is, as the people who are custodians of the budget, trailers cost a tremendous amount of money. And we are dealing in an uncertain fiscal time where we don't, you know, we don't know what the next budgetary cut is going to be because the governor hasn't yet allowed us to know what the next budgetary cut is going to be. And we are working within the confines of what the governor has given us. And please understand, I have two school-aged children. One is in the high school, one is in an elementary school. And it's been challenging on everybody's end. And we're putting out options that are feasible within the budgetary constraints that we have without the guidance that has been provided or has not been provided, I should say.
There's also the additional piece of, obviously, of staffing, right? So if we were to split people into groups of six children, we would need to hire a very large amount of teachers as well.
Well, my daughter's class had two or three teachers in there with aides and assistants, and they could easily let them teach. I mean, I'd rather have my daughter learning six hours a day than me being given 10 minutes of work to do and say, "Keep her busy for the day. Figure it out yourself."
But while none of the possible options are the greatest, at the end of the day, our ultimate goal is to have all students return to school on September 1st. However, not that anyone needs to be reminded of this, we are in the midst of a pandemic. And as such, while there's concern for students' health and safety, there's also concern for staff safety as well. So over the past several weeks, committees have worked on developing plans that will hopefully return kids to a safe school environment that will ensure their health and safety as well as the staff. As Mrs. Baruch pointed out, while it seems like a no-brainer, simply spread the kids out across the district, the question then becomes, if you split every class in two at the elementary level, you have doubled your teaching staff. For every 10 teachers, it costs the district approximately, I think I'm going to get this right, $100,000 or $1 million. Which one is it, Anthony?
$1 million.
$1 million. So for every 10 teachers, it's $1 million. So if we have 100 elementary classrooms, I can't even do the math in my head right now. So we're basically doubling the cost of our teaching staff. As you're aware, we just adopted a budget. So we're operating in the 2020-2021 school year with an adopted budget without the ability to expand nor increase that budget because there's no way to increase the dollars that we have to pay teachers. So we have to do what is prudent and what is responsible, both to our students, our staff, and to our taxpaying community. While we understand and do appreciate your concerns as a parent in terms of the education that your child is getting, we too are concerned with that. And we, over the course of the summer, will ensure that we're developing a plan to address the needs of kids based on the learning that we experienced over the last three months. You shared that the learning experience wasn't perfect. Guess what? It wasn't perfect across many districts in New York State as well as nationally. Reason being is because digital learning, remote learning, has never been done before. We, as a district, were in our infancy as it relates to integrating technology in our infrastructure. And so the pandemic hit at a time when we, as a district, were not ready for distance learning, just like several other districts. So I appreciate your concern, and you're willing to offer some suggestions that we probably should take a look at. However, as Mr. Lakoe pointed out, at this time, we need to work together to try to come up with the best possible solutions to educate our children this September.
Just one more solution with regard to teaching. For the younger grades, there are a lot of student teachers that could do it for credits in colleges. So I think you could push the student teachers down to the lower levels, and you solve a lot of your staffing problems.
That's definitely something.
I just think there's a lot of solutions out there that the board might consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Baruch?
Yes, we have, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing this correct, Maricel Goldman.
Ms. Goldman?
You could go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi. Hello, everyone. My name is Maricel Goldman. I have been in the East Meadow School District for about eight years now. You know, we're talking about reopening of schools, and we're talking about what are some of the things that we can do now. My main concern, or one of my main concerns, is that if you look at the guidance that has been published by the CDC, they make it very clear that one of the things that school districts should be attempting to do is to contain students in smaller groups so that, you know, you can more easily prevent in the case of transmission. I brought this issue before. And the fact that the possibility that we might have to have students sit in classrooms the entire day in just one classroom, it's very concerning to me because our classrooms are extremely hot. There's no air conditioning. There's very little, you know, I don't know why this hasn't been brought up or it hasn't happened. I am an administrator. I've worked with several districts in Nassau County, at least five or six. And these are districts that have poor budgets, and they are implementing either, you know, they're putting air conditioners in the room or they're creating some sort of central air system. We don't have that in East Meadow. And if we are going to contain kids and we are expecting them to learn in an extremely hot classroom, I find that inhumane, especially because all of the administrators' offices are equipped with air conditioning units. So to me, this is an issue of putting kids' safety and comfort at the forefront of this, you know, of this issue. And I just want to know, what is the plan that the district has to address this? Because I've had this conversation with the previous superintendent of schools. I've brought it up several times. I even email the board, and it seems like we are not really moving fast enough. And again, being an administrator in districts that have lower budgets, that are in, you know, not-so-healthy budgets, and see that it actually, you know, it's something that you can make it happen, I just want to know why is that we're still so far behind? Because to me, you know, I have two girls attending the school district, and one of them developed a skin condition due to excessive sweating. And to me, this is a concern, and I feel like we can do this if we want to do this.
Mrs. Goldman?
What is the solution for this?
Ms. Goldman, that's three minutes, but thank you. This is not the first time that air conditioning has been brought up. It won't be the last time, I'm certain. There are structural issues with when our schools were built and the power that they currently get from PSE and G. So it is a constant discussion. It is things that are on plans. However, they're not something that could absolutely be done immediately. It would take a structural change to our school district as a whole and way more planning than getting this done by September.
And I definitely understand that, and that's why I mentioned. And I definitely understand that, and that's why I, I mentioned that this is not the first time I brought this up.
No, it's not.
And we're still not there.
Ms. Goldman, thank you, Ms. Goldman. I appreciate that. What, what I would like to say additionally, though, is, yes, while I understand that is an issue, it's an issue for maybe two months or so, maybe three overall of our school year. And it's a lot of dollars to worry about those three months when we obviously have a lot of other concerns that we need to take care of. But we do appreciate you coming, it is, uh, speaking, it is something that we do take into account, that we do have discussions of continually, and know that, uh, future budgets, um, are going, and, and bond work is gonna be part of that solution, but thank you very much.
I just have one last comment on that.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Because I feel like I have to respond. You're saying this is a two-month issue?
Ms. Goldman?
If this is a two-month issue, why is it that every administrative building and office is equipped with the air conditioning?
I, I hope you appreciate everyone else's time who's here, because we do have a limit, and I want to be able to get to as many people as possible. But thank you very much. If you want to share any additional information, please email the board, we will get back to you.
I will, I will.
Thank you. Ms. Baruch? No, you're, you're muted, Alicia.
I am muted, I apologize. Mr. Ma-, uh, Mr. or Mrs. Massey, it just says Massey, I apologize.
Hi, Geraldine Massey. Um, I'm a local teacher in my summer starting year district. I'm just curious, how are students who are entitled to extended school years currently being safely taught now?
You're, you're, Ms., Ms. Massey, you're, you're fading in and out. It's hard to hear.
Um, I'm just wondering, how are students who are currently entitled, are, is it taught right now? I see drop-offs and pickups going on at Bowling Green.
I'm sorry, you're not, you're not coming through? You said something about pickups and drop-offs at Bowling Green, are we talking about school lunch?
No.
No?
How are the students get extended school year on their IEPs currently being safely taught in their programs? I see drop-off and pickups going on at Bowling Green right now.
She's asking about the students who, based on their IEPs, are getting extended school year services at Bowling Green.
Yeah, and real quick, and I guess the question is, how are they safely being taught? Well, we're abiding by CDC guidelines, as we'll discuss or present shortly, vis a vis our PowerPoint presentation. When the governor came out and indicated that summer school needed to be provided for students with special needs as a part of their extended school year program, the Health Department in New York State provided guidelines in terms of how the program should be put in place. Our Director of Special Education, Ms. Dobie's, um, abided by those guidelines, along with the help of our Director of Facilities, to ensure that all the necessary, um, protocols were put in place in terms of cleaning, in terms of PPE, in terms of, um, um, ensuring that kids and teachers could be socially distanced appropriately. So it's a, it's a, it's a preview of what is possible, right? And it gives us an opportunity to make sure that our protocols and our systems are tight.
Exactly. Um, what you're presenting later on, just wondering, will the plan allow for those students to receive the accommodations they should be getting as far as the minutes per day or hours per week?
Um, I think, I, I don't want to go into that level of detail, because I think first you should see what it is that we've come to at this point, not to say that it's locked in stone. Dr. Casamento will speak to some of the recommendations that have been provided by the committee. For example, distinguishing between students with special needs, students who are L learners, students who are in kindergarten and first grade, can we create a different learning environment for them based on what we have learned as a result of the distance learning experience, and how impactful or not impactful distance learning was for those particular groups of kids? And we'll speak to that.
Thank you.
Okie doke.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm concerned about those English language learners and those classified students, that they really need the most hands-on learning, and they need their ratios to be held.
And I think, and I think the committees that did the work are in full agreement with you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Massey. Ms. Baruch? Muted, muted.
My dogs have been barking, so I keep it in check. Um, Adisal's iPhone.
Hi, um, my name is Rosia Narea, I have three kids in Bowling Green, and I actually have some questions. So is this plan that you're presenting, is this like the be-all, end-all of plans? Is this is how you are planning to proceed in, in the fall? Or is there any hope for students to return to school as usual, full-time, five days a week? And my second question is, um, with regards to the surveys that were sent out, there are questions regarding whether or not your child would need daycare if, for the days when they are not in school. So I was wondering, how exactly would that daycare be provided? Would that be in an actual school building? Because if that's the case, that's sort of flies in the face of social distancing and eliminating the number of students in a school per given day.
Just real quick, in a nutshell, we are developing multiple plans for multiple possibilities, right? One of our plans is a full return. Another one of our plans is how do we stagger students to ensure social distancing? Another, um, one of our plans, options, is full distance learning. All of those plans are dependent upon the direction provided by the governor's office as well as NYSCD. The reason why we're engaging in these conversations now is because, back in March, we had to go to distance learning on a dime. We had to turn around in 48 hours and do something that we had never done before. That is why we have committees in place right now that are having conversations about what possible options can be put in place, and also what are some of the learning gaps we may need to address when students return in September in any one of those particular plans that we provided. More will be addressed when we get into the presentation portion of this meeting.
Okay. Um, what are my other questions? As far as splitting the students up, would it be possible to perhaps ask the people in the district? Because I'm sure there are many people in the district who would not be comfortable returning to school at all, if those people who are not comfortable and would opt to follow distance learning entirely? And I think you might actually find that maybe 20% to 30%, because of a child with pre-existing conditions, or a family member who's immune-compromised to some degree, might opt to just continue to learn from home, that may eliminate some of the crowding in the school. Will it eliminate, you know, enough to make it so that everybody can return full-time as usual? Maybe, maybe not, but would that be an option to consider, actually asking people in the district?
Everything is on the table.
Okay.
Trust me, that, anything that anyone here will recommend tonight has been talked about. So, um, yeah, but thank you, because it's great to hear differences of opinion and ideas that people have. It helps us in the planning. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Baruch?
Yes, um, N. Terzuli.
Mr. or Mrs. Terzuli?
Hi, good evening, this is Nick, Terzuli, my wife Cara, just a couple of questions. Good. Uh, so my first question is on the salary adjustments that was in the, um, in the, uh, in the proposal. Are there any details you guys can provide? And it's just, you know, our sincere hope that raises weren't provided in light of the pandemic and the global recession, which, you know, questions about that. My second question is on whether the school district can obtain a larger Zoom license to accommodate the large amount of people that were not able to access this meeting. And I'm sure there'll be future meetings like this, where there'll be a number of members of the community that want to join. So I'll let you tackle those two first, and I'll get to my third.
Um, typically, salary changes are normal occurrences that happen in every cycle of the district in terms of pay changes. Teachers are bound by a contract, and that contract, um, enjoins us to ensure that we provide them with certain renumeration, given more college credits. So when teachers meet certain salary, um, certain, um, credit accumulation, they're entitled to lane changes as per contract. And so those salary changes reflect those changes that are contractual, as well as hourly changes to salaries for people who do overtime, et cetera. It's a regular item on the board agenda, because the board has to approve salary changes. What was your second question?
So just, just on that, can you provide those details, or do I have to foil those?
You can foil.
Okay.
You are more than welcome to foil.
Do I have to foil? Do I have to foil, or are they publicly available otherwise?
No, you would have to foil, and whatever can be provided would be provided.
Great. On the Zoom license, can the school district obtain a license that can accommodate more people? It is available, we both, my wife, time for institutions.
We will do that tonight as an anomaly, as Mr. Um, Mr. Melnick pointed out. Our intent was not to have a Zoom meeting tonight. As a matter of fact, our Zoom license expired on June 30th, where we could have had more capacity. We didn't renew because it was our understanding that we would be moving back to our regular format in terms of a board meeting. It was at 8:45 last night that the governor decided to expand or extend his executive order, allowing us to continue in a virtual format.
Understood. On the reopening, the, the plan as presented tonight is really predicated on employers allowing employees, the taxpayers of this community, a lot of flexibility. Our school tax bill alone is $11,000 a year, and, and I'm sure it's a hefty burden for most of my colleagues and fellow residents. It's really difficult to, uh, afford that without both, in my house, both parents are working full-time. Uh, this, we're not guaranteed that our employers will provide us the flexibility they allowed during the first part of this pandemic. Uh, so I just wanted to make that clear, and as I'm sure other people have to you and to the school board.
Mm-hmm.
East Meadow School District's fund balance, as noted by the comptroller, uh, has been, in some years, overinflated, uh, by previous administrations, not, not, nobody on this board or you. Is there the opportunity to crack into that potentially padded fund balance to cover the cost of any new costs going forward in terms of hiring new teachers or potentially renting new space, as one of my fellow colleagues mentioned earlier? Uh, and additionally, my other question is, with the bonding that was just re-approved during this, uh, budget cycle, uh, we're paying more now annually for turf fields, and I'm sure, uh, athletes would love to play on those turf fields, they may not be able to. Is there an ability to go back into that bond, uh, and perhaps use some of the proceeds for items that may be more important this year, dealing with this pandemic as opposed to turf fields?
Uh, Mr. Terzuli, your questions are rather complex, and we're time-limited in terms of what can be answered. I'm gonna make a recommendation to you. Why don't you give my office a call tomorrow? And I would be more than happy to either answer your questions directly, or point you in the direction of, um, our business official, who could more specifically address some of the questions that you have. Really good questions, but I think they would probably garner a long, extensive conversation, of which we don't really have the time for right now. But like I said, we'd be more than happy to answer and come back in a public forum and address some of those concerns that you raised.
Okay, I appreciate it, Dr., thank you.
No problem. You can call my office tomorrow.
Thank you.
We will.
Ms., Ms. Baruch?
Uh, Laura Muguruza.
Hi there, um, my name is Laura Muguruza, I have two children in the East Meadow School District. And first, I do want to say that I'm very happy that you did have this meeting and that I was able to connect, because otherwise, I probably would not have been there physically. And, um, I just wanted to say, a, a lot of my points have been addressed by the other members, and they were very good points. The two questions I have left over is that surveys were distributed, and, um, I know that we are all at the mercy of the decision of the governor, but, um, the surveys that were distributed, I am probably very confident in saying that not all parents fill them out, or not all parents receive them. So even though, um, you know, depending on whatever happens, it's not ultimately what we put in the survey, or we wouldn't have a say in it. How do you obtain the opinions and the suggestions from other parents, perhaps?
What are you doing?
Don't have access to those surveys.
I would say that surveys are a snapshot and, snapshot in time, and while they're helpful and informative, um, they're contextual in that they're put into the larger pool of a conversation to help us make decisions. So surveys are a sample in, based on the people who respond, of what people are thinking in that moment. But, um, we simply use that information to help us or help inform our thinking. And as a matter of fact, I need to also say, we triangulate information. Dr. Casamento met with student groups at the elementary level, middle school level, high school level, and got their impressions about remote learning. We surveyed parents, we surveyed teachers, we had conversations with different groups of people. So it's a conglomeration of a bunch of information that helps us to, um, be informed about what our community is thinking, and helps to guide us to possible options.
Right. And I just have one other question. I know that, I actually work in IT and telecommunications, so I'm not afraid of technology, but I have to say that the distance learning was very challenging for me. The, the materials that are out there, or the means to get the work done, wasn't very easy, especially having two children that are in two totally different grade levels, kind of far apart. I have a second grader and a seventh grader now. So, um, my question is, uh, while budget's considered, what plans does the district have to perhaps educate parents, or offer some kind of guidance, as if we do have to continue with distance learning, or even to help the teachers who are maybe not so technologically savvy?
Ms. Muguruza, I think that's a really great question, and I think it's one that will be answered during our presentation. So if you could stick around, we will address everything that you asked.
Thank you so very much. Have a nice evening.
You're very welcome.
Okay, Ms. Be-, Ms. Baruch, for the sake of time, I think we'll take one more?
That's all we have, so that's great.
Nice.
Uh, Chris Harlitz.
Hello, everybody. I rarely speak up at these meetings, but I just wanted to voice, um, you know, I agree with a lot of things people are saying, um, disagree with some of it as well, but, you know, that's all all right, right? Dr. Carr and Dr. Casamento, I did send you an email earlier today, so I hope you, you know, take it under consideration. Please feel free to share it with whomever on the board, whoever you feel, uh, would benefit from it. My concern, I, I, if we have to go, if we really have to go, distance learning in the fall, you know, it's, it's what's gonna be safest for the kids, that's, you know, what's safest for the teachers. Uh, you know, I have two immune-compromised kids, so I get it. My, my little one, who's gonna be in sixth grade, to camp yesterday, so hoping that all does not go to hell this summer. My, my concern that I had throughout the distance learning for the past three months was the fact that teachers felt it was, um, acceptable to have one call a week with their students with 30 to 45 minutes.
Mrs. Horwitz, I'm gonna ask you, uh, one of the things that we try not to do is to, um, you know, speak ill of our staff in a public meeting.
No, no, I'm not calling out.
No, 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 I, 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 I hear you, but I also kind of like anticipate where you're going. And we'd rather not have that type of conversation about our staff. If you could speak in generalities about your child's experience, and maybe offer some possible, um, um, options for us that we could probably use to better address the needs of your child, that would probably be more helpful for us.
Sure, well, I, I think that the, the classes need to meet more regularly than once a week.
Very good.
30 to 45 minutes. I'm not, again, I'm not calling out any specific teacher.
Thanks.
I understand the position they were put in, that, the position you all put in as administrators, everything. But to, you know, they, they need to, I think everybody, um, needs to, you know, take this time, the opportunity that we have in the next few months before school starts, to really put more rigor into how the distance learning is gonna be handled, even if it's, you know, if it's part, if it's part-time distance learning, full-time, again, to me, it doesn't matter, because we have to do what's in the best interest of everybody.
Very good.
We also need to make sure that these kids aren't teaching themselves, because honestly, I, I, I can't teach my high school calculus next year. Uh, you know, I, I, I am way removed from, from pre-calculus, and I really don't want to get involved in that. Uh, my sixth grader, I could probably still handle some algebra and be fine. But, uh, but, you know, it, it, it just, it was, I saw that it was stressful for them, I saw that they, they wanted the social interaction that they couldn't get because they were not in a school setting, they were not allowed to go outside to meet with friends and everything. But that's my concern, is that not only do they get the educational, um, time with the teachers, but also that they get that interaction with their fellow students as well. They are kind of in isolation, and it's not good for their psyche as well. So that's, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mrs. Horwitz.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harlitz. And thank you all who did, who did come to speak tonight. And again, please, if you have anything further, please don't hesitate to reach out via email, and we will address your concerns and/or questions, and are always happy to do so. And that will end our public commentary section number one and move us into the items for discussion and action with a presentation that I think we've all been waiting for. So Dr. Card, I will turn it over to you to turn it over.
Very good. I will be joined with my colleagues, the Assistant Superintendent for Business, Dr. Pizzo, as well as the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mr. Russo and Dr. Casamento will round out the presentation. As I indicated, this is the work of many people, and I want to first take this opportunity to thank all of those folks who really quick, fast gave up their time and their efforts to help us to think about where we'd like to be in September. This slide provides us with a timeline of where we started and hopefully where we'll end up by next week. Of course, on March 16th, all schools within the district closed as a result of COVID-19. And the governor pushed us on March 18th to develop a distance learning plan. July 15th is the drop dead date in which school districts across Long Island, across New York State will be required to submit plans to the New York State Department of Education. We've received some guidance from the Department of Health, and the guidance focuses on these areas in front of us, some addressing scaling up operations, intensifying our cleaning, training our staff. As a matter of fact, that's one of the things that Mr. Russo and I talked about today, training our staff in terms of COVID-19. Mr. Russo, myself, Dr. Pizzo, Dr. Casamento throughout the summer will be engaged in different types of training as it relates to COVID-19 and addressing that. In front of you is the CDC guidelines in terms of school reopening. I'd like to focus on the center column, our recommended health and safety actions in place, promoting healthy hygiene practices such as hand washing, employees wearing cloth face covering as feasible, intensifying cleaning, et cetera. If no, we must meet safeguards first. Someone earlier asked, how are we running a extended school year program over at Bowling Green? Well, we are because we met all of the criteria in this particular column. Is ongoing monitoring in place? You bet. As I mentioned, our Director of Facilities, as well as Ms. Dobie's, who is supervising that summer school program, are making sure that everything that you see in front of you in terms of monitoring is in place. As I indicated, these are some of the things that we're going to have to address this fall. In front of you right now are guidelines that we had received from the Department of Health in regards to in-person special education services and instruction over the course of summer, of the summer for special education students. Some of the things that we addressed before opening included establishing and maintaining communication about the scale and scope of in-person instructional practices. To that end, Ms. Dobie's and her staff actually held a meeting last week, Wednesday, before the program started with parents of students who would be engaged in that program. We're going to continue to do that. One of the things that I've done in the past over the summer, I've met with entering kindergarten parents, and I've also met with rising seniors. I will continue to do that this summer vis-à-vis this virtual platform so that we're communicating. Some of the things that we need to do while open, acceptable face coverings. One of the things that we discovered is that as long as staff is wearing face covering and maintaining that six feet, all is okay. What happens if they're beyond six feet? Well, then they can remove that face covering. Mr. Russo will speak more specifically to that. We're encouraging people, but we're encouraging students, but not requiring students to wear acceptable face coverings, especially students who have medical conditions that might prevent them from wearing face coverings. This slide has a lot of the do's and don'ts of reopening. For example, adhering to appropriate social distancing, limiting gatherings, restrict non-essential visitors to our buildings. We're going to be very, we're going to adhere to making sure that people who are visiting our buildings first make an appointment, two, ensuring that they have a purpose for visiting our buildings before we allow them access. Closing the use of communal spaces, thinking about how we do lunch, et cetera. And also dealing with identifying signs and symptoms of COVID-19. Mr. Russo will speak to some of the things that we're putting in place in regards to staff and some of those things that might also relate to students in the fall. Implementing contact tracing. One of the things that we're going to have on July 29th with our safety committee, one of our BOSE's consultants will be talking about contact tracing. How do we go about doing that so that we're knowledgeable about that process? What happens in the event of a COVID-19 case in the district? And lastly, notification of exposure enclosures to staff and families. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pizzo so that he could address more specifically some of the cleaning protocols that are in place that are aligned with the guidance that was provided by the Department of Health in New York State. Dr. Pizzo?
Thank you, Dr. Card. As Dr. Card mentions, preventative measures are so important. As we know, this is a respiratory illness. We know that the primary mode of transmission is person to person. The one piece of news that is encouraging to some extent is that once the virus is on surfaces, it is something that we can deal with. And with the proper deep cleaning and disinfecting procedure, that is approved and advocated for by, by all the research that we've done through National BOSEs and recommendations from the state. We are able to, to address issues on the surface. And just to go into what we do when, when you are doing basic cleaning and deep cleaning in regards to preventative measures for any time we have a virus on a surface or the potential for a virus being on a surface. First, you need to clean and sanitize, and we would do that with a peroxide-based sanitizer or there's a system called Orbio, which actually makes its own surfactant. It's kind of a similar setup to the way a saltwater pool works in that, in that it creates a sanitizing mechanism that brings the germ load down. And what that does is that removes anything from the surface and it brings the germ load down. And when you're talking about coronavirus, it's basically an envelope virus. It's contained within a lipid, it does break down. It's a fatty lipid that's contained in, so it does break down when you're using this process. But after you've sanitized and removed any kind of particles and brought the germ load down, you're also going to disinfect. Now, some of the questions are, well, what type of product would you use to disinfect? Is it something that would be a protocol that we would be, that we would feel safe with? And that's some concern that we all share. The type of disinfectant you use, disinfectants are meant to kill microbes. It's not something that is on any kind of product that would really be classified as green. You would use a product that is off the EPA approved list. That is the only mechanism for determining if something is effective against COVID-19 or any virus that you're attempting to, to address. So we're using then products off a, off a approved list. And anything, you know, there are other steps that we do if, you know, hopefully we don't encounter this, but if there's any, any kind of reason to react to any kind of issue that's been identified, we do have, besides those regular deep cleaning procedures, which are going to be done throughout the day. This is not something a one-shot thing. These are things that are going to be done by multiple shifts on the custodial staff. But if we do identify an issue, we do also have protocols in regards to, you see sometimes on commercials, different types of spray products that spray disinfectants. We do have a means to do that as well as another step. So it's a multi-step approach, and we do feel that's, that's in line with all the best guidance that we've been able to identify. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Card, you're on. Okay.
Mr. Russo?
Thank you, Dr. Card. Well, our return to work protocol outlines the procedures that we've put in place in order to ensure the health and safety of our staff as they return to work. The protocol was shared with our 12-month staff who returned to work on July 1st. And, and basically, you know, that, that protocol is something that at this point has not been shared with our teaching staff because we realized that as we move forward in the process, the protocol could be changing. So at this point, the protocol's been shared with our 12-month staff, who for the most part did return on July 1st. We will be sharing this protocol with the teaching staff as we get closer to September. All right, so the first step of the return to work protocol really is something that's happening before our staff even gets to work, and it's a self-screening. And the self-screening requires that employees answer three questions prior to coming to work. And the three questions, first question is, do you have any COVID-19-related symptoms? And we have a list of symptoms that we were, we, and looking through the CDC guidance, we did list those symptoms. Also, the second question is, have you tested positive for COVID-19? And the third question is, have you been in contact with anyone who's tested positive? So prior to coming to work each day, our employees who have returned at this point, they answer the screening survey, and then based upon their responses, if they, if the answer is yes, then they receive a response that they should not come to work. And then also, I receive an email, as well as members of my staff within my office, they also receive an email indicating that someone has answered yes. So if someone were to answer yes, then I would immediately contact the appropriate supervisor, and we would ensure that those individuals didn't report to work. The screening will also, currently is being used for visitors to the buildings. So, so over the summertime, at this point, we, and I know Dr. Pizzo is currently working on an in-depth protocol for this, but we've been, we basically have a three-step process when it comes to visitors coming to the buildings. First step is the self-screening. So visitors have to, before they even come into the building, just like employees, we send them a link and they have to answer the self-screening questions. Clearly, if they answer yes, they cannot come into the building. If they answer no, then they're, they come into the building. Part of that process also is, visitors have to make an appointment before they even come into the building. So for example, I can speak about myself. I know that over the past week or so, I've been meeting with candidates on an individual basis as we move forward in the hiring process. So what I will do is I'll call up the candidate, let them know that I would like to meet with them. Then I explain that we will be practicing social distancing. They should, they have to wear face covering, I'll be wearing a face covering. And I give them a date that they will be coming to the building. We meet them at the front door, and prior to coming into the building, they have to take the self-screening survey. Again, if they answer yes, they clearly won't be coming into the building. If they answer no, then we have them come in. Part of that process as well is also taking their temperature, and that's something we're also working on as well. Now, this self-screening tool also has the capacity to be utilized with students. Clearly, we're not there yet in terms of having the self-screening survey for students before they come to school, but it does have that capacity. So it's something that we may consider moving forward. So far, it's been working well. And based upon how it goes over the next month or so, it's something we may consider as we plan for September. All right, the, so, so now, an employee is in the building. They, they've taken the self-screening survey, they've answered no, now they're in the building. The next step in the process is social distancing, where when employees are in the building, they have to maintain the appropriate social distancing, which is six feet. And we've gone through the buildings, secondary buildings, because at this stage, we primarily only have staff within the secondary buildings that report each day, and Salisbury. So we've gone through all the different offices where we know that we'll have our 12-month staff, and we've made sure that there's appropriate social distancing regarding their work location. If there wasn't, then we did put up protective barriers as well as made the appropriate moves to ensure that we did have that six feet of space. So then, you know, of course, when someone is at their work location, as Dr. Card indicated, they don't necessarily have to wear a face covering, but we realize people are not going to be staying at their desks or their work location all day. So people will be up, they'll be moving, and at that point, that's where face coverings would come into play. So when somebody's at their work location, if everybody's, you know, where they're supposed to be, there's no need for face coverings, but once people get up and they start moving around, then there is a need for face coverings. So for example, let's say an employee were to get up, they wanted to go into the hallway, they needed to utilize the restroom. At that point, they would need to bring a face covering because within the hallway, we can't guarantee that we'll be able to maintain that six feet of social distancing. And in addition to that, even within bathrooms, we can't guarantee that especially if there's multiple units within the restroom, that there won't be other individuals within that space. So face coverings are to be used when we know that we, or we could potentially not be able to maintain the appropriate social distance. We, we will provide face coverings for those individuals who require it. Employees are able to bring in their own face covering, but we realize things happen. Sometimes they break during the day. Other times, someone may get up and just go to another office, not even realize they don't have a mask on. We'll have masks available in each of those different offices. And this is something that's happening throughout all of the buildings, not just at the Salisbury Center. The, okay, shared workspaces. So clearly, within an office setting or within a school setting, there will be shared workspaces. So for example, one of the examples I like to use is copy room. Within a copy room, I can't think of many copy rooms district-wide where they, you could really have more than one or two individuals in a space without being able, with, while being able to maintain the appropriate social distancing. So when people are in shared workspaces, for the most part, they should be utilizing face coverings. We really should be limiting the use of shared workspaces when it comes to copy, the copy room, conference rooms, kitchens, break rooms, lounges, things of that nature. But, you know, we're also realistic. We realize there will be individuals who would like to utilize the kitchen. They need to use, use the microwave, the sink, put something into the refrigerator, but that should be very limited. People go into those spaces, they do what they have to do, they leave. But when they are in those spaces, again, you maintain the appropriate, appropriate social distancing and you have a face covering available because you cannot guarantee who's coming in a room behind you. For example, if you're in a copy room and you're making copies, you could be in there alone, and then within the next minute or so, you have one or two people who are waiting to come into the room or have come into the room. And at that point, if you can't maintain the social distancing, you do need a face covering. So clearly, in shared workspaces, you have shared equipment. And with, when it comes to the equipment, really, we will try our best to ensure that we have the appropriate disinfectant spray as well as wipes to be able to wipe down that equipment. Again, I like to use the copy machine as an example, but I think it's a good example. We, however, there's no guarantee that the person who used the copy machine before you get there, wiped it down, used disinfectant. There's no guarantee, we'll try our best, but there's no guarantee that we'll have disinfectant there. So that's where people should wear gloves. That's, that's something that I feel is important. And if they can't wear gloves, then right after using that equipment, then people should be washing their hands or sanitizing their hands. Again, when it comes to shared equipment, one of the things we do have in the protocol, it, it could be useful in certain spaces, is having one person designated as the person who operates certain equipment, which in certain offices could be the case, where one individual will make the copies, run, you know, send scans, scan documents, whatever needs to be done. where one individual will make the copies, run, you know, send scans, scan documents, whatever needs to be done. But that may not always be the case, and there could be shared equipment. There could just be shared things in general. Uh, again, if you go to a kitchen, if you look at the refrigerator and the sink and things of that nature. So, um, whenever employees encounter shared equipment, they should be taking those appropriate, uh, steps to make sure that they're protecting themselves. And, and it really, it, most of this, a lot of this, aside from social distancing and face coverings, comes down to cleaning, as Dr. Pizzo indicated. So we, again, will do our best to ensure that as much as possible, we will, we will disinfect equipment and, uh, ensure that we're cleaning as best we can. High-touch surfaces, such as doorknobs, things of that nature. But, I mean, I could tell you, e- even in my own office, I, I know that, you know, the custodians will come by and they're great about cleaning off the doorknobs, but then as soon, as soon as somebody walks in and touches that doorknob, then it hasn't been cleaned. So, that's where people, again, need to make sure, and employees need to make sure that they're utilizing the appropriate, uh, safety measures. And that's where washing your hands frequently, using hand sanitizer comes into play because that's just so important. And, again, in a school setting, in an office setting, um, things will be passed back and forth. Papers will be shared. Boulders will be passed back and forth. Files, things of that nature. Uh, you, you can't guarantee that the person who's handing you something just sanitized their hands. So that's why, as a rule, my thinking is, if someone hands me something, as best as I can, I try to use hand sanitizer. So, again, that's our protocol. The, uh, this is ever-evolving. And we realize that as we get towards September, this will change. I'm sure it will change. I'm sure we'll send out revisions. And, uh, and at that point, when we have a definitive idea of what's happening towards the opening of the school year, this will be shared with, uh, our teaching staff at that point.
Very good. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Russo. I think, um, one of the things that we wanted to establish is that we are making sure that we're applying CDC guidelines to ensure the safety of our students as they return, as well as, as our staff. Right now, we'll turn our attention to community feedback. While the survey was pretty extensive, I just wanted to share a couple of items in terms of what, um, our respondents indicated. One of the questions we asked was, how comfortable are you with sending your child to a school building every day this fall? Um, if recommended health and safety measures such as social distancing are in place? But what we found out of 2,917 responses, 74% of our respondents are very or very and somewhat comfortable with sending their child to a school building every day this fall. So, three-fourths, um, of our parent population are okay with their kids coming back to school. However, what's concerning is the 26% who are somewhat or very uncomfortable with sending their kids back to school. That's one of the reasons why we made sure we opened up this presentation with the guidelines that was provided by the CDC, the guidelines that were provided by the Department of Health, and Dr. Pizzo explained some of the cleaning protocols that we have in place. And Mr. Russo spoke specifically to the protocols we have in place for adult workers coming back into the school. The second question that we thought was, um, worthy of sharing with you guys this evening was the question about indicating how important the following proportions are to you in sending your child back to school. While all of these things are important, there were five items that came up as very important for a lot of our parents. The highest was, the school is thoroughly cleaned at least once, that, once a day. One of the reasons why we didn't contemplate a half-day split schedule was for this very response, right? That the school is cleaned thoroughly after students have been in the building. If you have a split schedule, students arriving and then leaving, and then trying to bring other students into the building, you cannot clean the building thoroughly. That's one of the reasons why we did not consider a split schedule. The second thing that garnered a high response as very important from parents was the statement, "Students and staff regularly wash their hands." Well, unfortunately, we don't have sinks in every classroom, mostly the kindergarten and first grade classrooms. So the third, um, item that came up as very important was, "Hand sanitizer is provided in each classroom and frequently used." This is one of the things that we will make sure we address, that there's hand sanitizer in each classroom, that hand sanitizers are distributed, um, throughout the building to ensure that, as Mr. Russo said, when people are touching things, if they can't make it to the bathroom, they're using hand sanitizer. In addition to that, um, two other items that came up as very important, "Materials shared among, among students are cleaned in between use." We're actually going to try to limit that. Prevent students from sharing items, if totally not necessary that they share. And lastly, visitors and volunteers are limited on campus. So three things rose to the top, I mean, five things rose to the top, which I shared with you. The next item has to do with the possible configurations. This question asked, um, our parents to rank order from most, um, favorable to least favorable, the configurations that they would like to see in place. And of course, the orange represents number one, the thing that rose to the top for many parents. In-person school only on certain days of the week. I.e., Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, or a combination of Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So parents were most favorable to that configuration. A lot of people that we presented this to ask the question, well, what about full return? Full return is, of course, our optimal option. These three options are if a full return is not possible. Parents said that the alternating weeks, while it was better than learning at home full-time, it's not one of the things that they'd like to see happen for various reasons. And of course, learning at home full-time every day was the least favorable to many parents, remote learning. So we know that parents don't care for remote learn, learning, but should we need to go back to remote learning, we will, I believe, be at our best. And, um, Dr. Casamento will speak to that shortly. Reopening recommendations. Before we get to the recommendations, I just want to tell you who participated in our committees. The district-wide school safety task force, as well as a district-wide school reopening planning committee. Some of the things that they looked at included instruction, transportation, building entry procedures, health screening protocols, alternative classroom setup, building traffic flow, meal service, childcare, and mental health support. The committees were charged with making recommendations, which they did, and you'll hear about some of those recommendations as it relates to school reopening. Recommendations were aligned with current guidance from the CDC, from the Department of Health, et cetera. And they were tasked with also looking at the guidelines that were provided by many of those, um, agencies, as well as the feedback that was, um, provided by, um, our community. The community, uh, I mean, the committee met on several dates. The school safety task force met on June 10th, July 1st, and will meet again, and I didn't put this date in there, my apologies, Ju- July 29th. The reopening planning committee had multiple committees, multiple meeting dates. And the elementary and secondary committees, as well as technology committees, will continue to meet. Um, one of the questions that might be asked was, is who exactly were on these committees? Well, of course, central office admins participated, building administration, the director of facilities, custodians, buildings and grounds, teachers, parents and students, school nurse, district physician, clericals, um, the Nassau County Police Department, Department of Homeland Security, and Board of Education members all participated on various committees. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Casamento so that he could talk about some of the recommendations that were made by the instructional planning subcommittee. Dr. Dave?
Thank you, Dr. Card. So the, um, instruction, the curriculum and instruction area had 32 members of the committee. There were parents, administrators, teachers, um, on the committee. And that group, that larger group, and Dr. Card, can you just flip back one slide real quick? So, that, those 32 members were broken, uh, got, served on subcommittees as well. So all the committee members served on either the elementary or the secondary subcommittee. And then there were also the technology subcommittee, the special education subcommittee, the ENL subcommittee, and the SEL subcommittee. Um, one of the things that can't be, um, diminished is that we know from all of the literature that's coming out, that our students and our families have suffered some form of trauma during this time. And so it was really important that we, um, think about, what do we do for families and for students when we do come back to school? And that's why we have the SEL committee, and Dr. Geraldine Smith, um, spearheaded that subcommittee. And that subcommittee actually came up with, um, they're going to be delivering a survey, yes, another survey coming to your homes. Um, and what the intent of that is, is to identify who are our students who are coming back to us, who are having trouble or in real crisis, so that we get them the services they need early, quickly, so that they can be successful in school, successful at home, um, and just successful overall. So be on the lookout for that. I think I said to Dr. Smith that that should go out somewhere in the middle of July, once things start to calm down a little. Um, the work of the ENL subcommittee was spearheaded by, uh, Mr. Lucassic. And one of the things that, uh, we looked at there was, um, we've got students coming into our system who speak, uh, very, speak and understand very little English, and it's not spoken at home. These we call our entering and our emerging students. And one of the things that came out of that recommendation is that perhaps we bring those students back every day. Um, it is believed that the others will be able to continue their, continue their language acquisition through whatever rotation we develop, should we have to go to a hybrid or blended model. Now, I should have started with this. The committee looked at three possible ways of opening. The first way was, we come back, everybody's back in the building. The second, what if we have to do a blended or a hybrid approach? And the third, what if we have, God forbid, have to go back to a full remote approach? So all of these committees answered some guiding questions based on those three environments. So, um, when I talk about a lot of this, I talk about the blended. Coming back in a full form, um, pretty much, obviously, everybody's coming back, instruction occurs as usual, and, um, grading happens as usual, assessments are given the usual way. But what happens should we have to come back in a blended environment? The special education subcommittee also had some concerns. There have, uh, there are several, uh, students who have actually, uh, families are reporting regression in some of the special education population. So we know that this time has been particularly tough for these students. And so if, the recommendation coming out of the special education subcommittee is that if, should we not be able to come back full force, that our students in our 811, 1211, 1511 in our REACH program will come back every day of the week. Those are small classes. We can do the social distancing, um, similar to what is happening currently with our extended school year program over Bowling Green. And I was over there yesterday to watch it happen, and you're, everybody's right. Going back to school is absolutely a good thing for, for kids. It's a good thing for teachers. Yes, they were wearing masks, but you could still tell there were smiles underneath those masks. Um, the technology subcommittee is actually a really important subcommittee, and that's one that is actually an ongoing committee, um, even not in times of, of crisis, because we're always looking at technology for the district. And, but this committee has really ramped up. Um, and it's been weekly to, to bi-weekly, and we actually just had a meeting this morning because we are anticipating that we sh- may be back in this environment again at some point. So to that end, I can report that the technology committee, uh, worked very hard at trying to figure out, along with, uh, Dr. Pizzo and Ms. Prisenda, how do we sup- get enough devices so that every student in the district will, and teacher, will have a device? At this time, we have about 4,500 devices on order. Um, the goal is to have the district be one-to-one, meaning every student will have a device in their possession provided by the district. Um, so that's something we worked on. In addition, you'll note that, um, some of you know that we have implemented, not implemented, we are starting to implement Schoology as our learning management system. Through surveys we gave throughout the time we were on distance learning, the preponderance of people said, "What's with all the platforms? I can't keep up with all the platforms." So this will provide one centralized location for students to log in and work within the platforms. In addition, parents won't have to go to three different Google, uh, classrooms to find out, or 30 different classrooms to find out what's going on in their kid's work. There will be one, there, there will be a parent login. I know that a question came up earlier about, um, parent training. Part of the Schoology, um, implementation will be parent training, and we will offer that for parents. In addition, there are several platforms that we will be, um, training parents on as well, and we will be writing a landing page on our website for parents to go to. Should they say, "Let's have a question about Flipgrid," they can watch a quick video on Flipgrid and understand what that is. So, these are things that the technology committee has looked at, in addition, um, specific apps. So, again, going to that. There's so many platforms, I don't know what, with, what I'm doing. We are really limiting our platforms down to, um, nine possible apps for our teachers and students to work in. So that's, um, all work that the technology committee is working on. And right now, we're working on, what does it look like for one-to-one? We kind of put the cart before the horse because we know we needed to have devices, so we rolled out one-to-one. In most places, when you say, "Hey, we're gonna go one-to-one," you think about where all the problems could be, and then you order the devices and deliver them out. We kind of ordered the devices, and now we are backtracking, and we're saying, "Okay, what do we need to have in place when all of this happens?" And that's what we started working on this morning. What happens when it breaks? What happens if a student, uh, leaves it in school? Where does it get charged? All these things are things we talked about this morning and are continuing to talk about. And we'll be developing a handbook for students and parents in terms of that as well. Now let me talk about the last two, the elementary and the secondary subcommittees, because they did, they spent the majority of the time talking about scheduling. And one of the things that we realized was, we could have gone eight-day, B-day, eight-day, B-day, you know, we separate students into two halves, eight-day, B-day, eight-day, B-day. But there would be no continuity of instruction. So both the elementary and the secondary subcommittees thought that the best thing, should we have to do this, would be to separate students into an A group and a B group by alphabet. Why by alphabet? Well, most families have the same last names, the majority of families have the same last, the children have the same last names. So that if there's an older student in the home, they could be home at the same time the younger student is. We tried to think about the parents as much as possible when developing these plans, knowing that none, none is more perfect than if we are all in school at the same time. So having said that, the way it will work is, let's say, I am in Group A. I would come to school Monday, Tuesday, the first week. And then, let's say, Dr. Card was in Group B, he would come to school Thursday, Friday. Every other Wednesday, so the first, the first week, the A group goes on Wednesday. So that first week, I, my A group, I go to school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Dr. Card goes Thursday, Friday. I'm at home, learning remotely. We are currently working with the teachers to, to talk about, what does that remote learning look like when the student isn't physically in the class? Con- instruction will continue. We know we have a year's worth of curriculum to cover. It won't be like last year. And knowing that as well, we've talked about what does assessment look like? An assessment is gonna, the, the assessments themselves may look different, but students are once again going to receive grades similar to when they are in, in school all the time. At the same time, that means that report card grades will be done the same way. There will be actual teaching and learning, even when students are home. It won't be, oh, Thursday, Friday, um, Dave's at home, he's on his own. It's not gonna be like that. So, so let me go back. So the first week, I'm there three weeks, Dr. Card's there, uh, three days, Dr. Card's there two days. The next week, I'm there two days, Dr. Card is there three days, because that next Wednesday, the B group picks up that Wednesday. So that is what we agreed to, what, what, uh, seemed to be the most reasonable structure for K-5, 6, 12. Now, even splitting alphabetically, you can never guarantee that secondary students' classes are gonna split evenly because there are so many permutations to a secondary student's schedule. You could have theoretically, out of 20 kids, you could have 14 kids that are A to L, and then only six kids M to Z. So, we are in the process with, um, Mr. Camerata, So we are in the process with Mr. Camerata and the head custodians in each building are going through every room in the district. Determining the maximum number of students that can fit in each room. So a teacher who used to teach in only one classroom may now have to teach in multiple classrooms depending on the size of their classes on those days. So let's just quickly go through these. I think we've answered most of these questions. Students are gonna follow their traditional schedule. Like I know that was another thing that was really big and it was something that in my focus groups with the students, didn't matter which level you talked to. The students all said, oh my God, the worst part of this was creating a schedule for myself. And they are, and, and, excuse me, at the high school and middle school, they wanted to follow their period one to nine. I said, really, you wanna follow your one to nine? You wanna be sitting in front of this computer from 7:30 to 2 o'clock every day? And they, excuse me, and they paused and they said, ooh, that's, that's a lot of time. And then they said, they said, well, you know, if you gave me more than the passing break, if you gave me 15 minutes? That would give me time to refocus and be ready for my next class. So these are things we're talking about. Same thing at the elementary. At the elementary level, the, the kids too, I said, wow, you're gonna be in front of a screen that long? And they said, oh my gosh, no, I can't do that. I need some time in between. And so the elementary principals, by classroom teacher, are working on schedules for online learning where there will be breaks. In addition to a full lunch break for all of the students. So they will follow similar schedules, should we go to the blended or the full remote learning. Next slide. We talked about the certain groups, the students that would come back, grading and assessment we talked about. And I just talked about all of that in question six as well.
Very good. And so many of you are familiar with the different phases that we're in, Phase 1, Phase 2. I think Long Island right now is in Phase 3. And Phase 4 is to be determined. If you've read the newspaper where these phases was, were published, in Phase 4 is where schools are supposed to reopen. I think Long Island is scheduled to go into Phase 4 on July 8th tomorrow. So that means schools are supposedly going to reopen. However, as I indicated at the top of the presentation and earlier in the question and answer period. We have not received any guidance from the state yet. However, the purpose of tonight is to provide the Board with some of the work that has been done by our Committees. In preparation for submission of a preliminary plan to the State Education Department next week. So at this time, I'd like to open it up for any questions from the Board of Education.
There any Board members with questions? I, I just wanna say, not answer, ask me any questions at this moment, just how incredibly thankful I am that Dr. Card, Dr. Casamento, Mr. Russo. Dr. Pizzo, I know Ms. Prisenda as well. How, how much time and effort you put into putting this plan together with little or no guidance other than sort of, here's some CDC guidelines. Go, go get 7,000 kids in education. So I, I just wanna say thank you for that. I think this is just incredibly detailed and well thought out. And, and I thank you for, for all the energy that was put into this. With the knowledge that at any moment, we may get guidelines that'll throw this all away and you'll have to start from scratch again. But I do wanna thank you for, for all the time that you've, you've put in so far. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And also I just wanna comment on how thorough and incredibly detail oriented it is. So thank you.
Dr. Eckers, you, you had something?
Just one quick thing. First, yeah, and I echo both of your statements and sentiments. And this was very, very informative and, and very well put together. And, and I understand, because I'm engaged in doing similar work right now in, in the school where I'm working. And I know, and we've been working morning, noon and night on this type of thing, so I know how long this took. And so thank you again. The only question I have, and I apologize if, if for some reason you said this and I somehow missed it. But are we planning, if we have kids coming in, are we planning on keeping those kids at all grade levels? In a cohort, in a room, all day to avoid the contact with other people in the building? And then have teachers come to those rooms, art on a cart type of thing? Specialties, phys ed, music, things like that? Just wondering if, you know, if that came up in the conversation.
So that did come up, Dr. Eckers. At the elementary level, as you're aware, that's a lot easier, right? Art on a cart, lunch in a classroom. When you get to the second, when you get to the secondary level, it's not as easy. There have been some ideas thrown out and that's the next phase of this. So as Dr. Card mentioned, the elementary and secondary Subcommittees are going to be ongoing. This is the next phase. How do we limit movement of high school students and second, middle school students? I don't really know. I know that there are some ideas out there of possibly only doing certain periods one day and certain periods the next day. That way they're only moving four times a day versus nine times a day.
Like a block schedule?
Yeah. Continued.
Okay, thank you very much.
I wanna, can I just bounce back real quick? Someone asked earlier, and it was one of the questions that we talked about, large groups, PE and music and, and music ensembles. So for PE, there are activities where they can socially distance, they can go outside when it's nice. Those kinds of things are being discussed. The same thing is being done for ensembles. Ensembles may have to meet in smaller groups of brass or woodwind. One of the members of the Committee was Caitlin Howe, who has 144 students in Harry's Federal High School Chorus. Singing is supposedly a super-spreading event. Their organization is actually, the, the Nassau County Music Educators are actually working on recommendations for that right now. So we don't have an answer on what that looks like, even if we had half, 472 kids. I mean, that's still a lot of kids in a very small area. So we are working on those large groups.
Okie doke. More questions?
Any other Board members have questions?
I have one. Dr. Casamento, what are we doing with high school elective? Are we cutting some of them? Or are you offering the kids the full agenda that they have had?
The, the intent at this time is to keep everything as is, nine periods, exact same courses. That is the intent at this time.
Let me remind, we hope that by December, January, and I hate to use the words I'm about to use, that we will be returning to normal. Yeah? And so we have to begin the year with kids, students fully scheduled as if they're returning to a normal school year. And, and so, yes, Mrs. Benowitz, yes, kids will have a full schedule because we hope to ensure that they will be following a full schedule. Even if it's a hybrid schedule or if it's a remote learning schedule. And I think that's the part of our learning experience over the past three months. I think Dr. Dave spoke to a bunch of kids. One of the things that kids miss is that social piece. And usually those social pieces happen in, in, in phys ed, it happens during the co-curriculars. That's another part of the conversation that we need to have. Do we continue co-curriculars? So kids, if it's remote learning, after school, can they get together and still engage in those clubs that they participate in during the school year? Dr. Dave mentioned our concern about the mental health, well-being of our kids, the trauma that many of them have experienced. Schools, no matter what people have said, reimagining schools to be anything but what they have been is ridiculous. The kids have told us that. The kids know that they like being, most of the time, with their friends. And here on Long Island, that place where that happens for a lot of our kids are in schools. So we need to make sure that our plan is developed in a way that supports the best interest and the needs of kids. Now, I see a lot of parents asking questions about childcare. That's definitely a conversation that we need to have. I think it was John Laco who said, we need to start functioning like a village. Because a hybrid schedule is not gonna be perfect. A hybrid schedule is being developed because we're in the midst of a pandemic. Where we can't have all kids back in the school building at the same time because it's not in their best interests. Their best interest because we don't want them to get sick, nor do we want them to become infected and taken home to their parents. So we need to limit the number of kids who are in the building. And so when we start talking about childcare, I think as a district, we will need to explore what's available in the community. And have conversations with parents about what's available. But I think, going back to Mr. Laco, and I hate to keep channeling my Laco. I think it's important that parents begin to have these conversations about how we support each other during this time of need. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. And if there's no other Board member announcements, I'm sorry, Board member questions. Listen, obviously, the, the best case scenario is everyone back in school at the same time. It's a question of, if that's not possible, which seems it's going to be the case, what is our next best option? And I think you've, you've provided a, a great framework for that. With the hope that we all go back, but the knowledge that if not, we have, we have plans otherwise. So thank you very much. And we're gonna, I'm gonna move on to the next items in our meeting. And the next one is a second reading of Policy 1900, the naming and dedication. Mr. Russo, I don't think we had any changes from last time, if that's correct?
No, no changes.
Okay. And this one, as, as we discussed at the previous meeting, we're, we're adding language that we're not gonna name any buildings. Structures, anything after a person who is living, with the dangers that might occur if other, other things occur later in life. With that, since this is a second reading, we're gonna make a, a motion to approve the amending Policy 1900 naming and dedication. Would someone like to make that motion? Dr. Eckers, second, Ms. Baruch?
I think Allison.
Yeah.
Matt?
Yeah, we're gonna do discussion now. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one question. I just have one question. I've read this over a few times. This is not the buildings that we have now. We're not thinking about renaming any of the buildings.
This is, this right. This right now, this policy is for moving forward.
Allison, you're frozen.
Ms. Ben, so to answer, to, to answer what was the question which I think you were done with was, this is a policy for moving forward at this time.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
That part, that part came through. Okay, thank you, Allison. All right, if there's a, if there's no further discussion on this, we'll take a vote. Ms. Baruch? Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me makes seven, nothing. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to discuss the Board Retreat. This is something that we've, we've discussed in the past and part of our planning to come up with a Board Retreat that we try to do every year. I don't want anyone out there to think that this is us going to some sort of place of relaxation. We've traditionally done these in the Salisbury Center. And I think that's gonna be either the case this year or maybe an outdoor location due to circumstances. But I wanted to start throwing around dates of possibility for this year that we could do this. I think a Saturday or Sunday probably works best. I think for ease of scheduling this year, it's probably not likely all of us are going away. So we'll probably be around for the most part. So.
For your convenience, if you notice, inside Board Docs, I don't know if people are looking at their computers and, because we're online.
I have them up here.
Under executive content, I listed a bunch of possible dates. Saturday, August 8th or Sunday, August 9th, Saturday, August 15th or August 16th, Sunday, and so on. So any Saturday or Sunday in the month of August, if that's good with everyone. Dr. Luce?
May as well, it's a public forum, but I'm having surgery in the beginning of August, so we'll need a couple of weeks for recuperation.
So later is fine.
Later, that would be wonderful.
And I felt the later the better for obvious, you know, COVID circumstances. I'm much happier the further away from this.
So August 29th or August 30th? And more than likely, we're going to do a retreat outside in a, you know, location that we'll be able to social distance, isolate from others. And at this point, Mike Renary will more than likely be leading our retreat.
Ms. Napolitano, you had something?
Yeah, I, if at all possible, I prefer a Sunday, not a Saturday. It's the only day I get to spend with my husband.
Okay.
Okay. So you wanna shoot for Sunday, the 20th, what was that, the 30th?
I'm sorry, that should be August 30th. My apologies.
Sunday, the 30th.
That's, that's right before we start school, correct?
You noticed.
So would it pass, I mean, I don't know if it's enough time for, for Dr. Luce, but perhaps would the 23rd work?
I prefer not that week.
Sorry, not that week?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm told two weeks, so I should be okay by, I guess, the week before then. My, my surgery is the 3rd.
August 23rd?
August 16th.
Matt, Matt said the 23rd doesn't work for him.
If we have to, it's okay. I try to avoid it.
I could, I, I think I could probably do the 16th.
The 16th? Does the 16th work for everyone?
It, it will, but emotionally, I'd rather be on the 30th for, you know, my own sanity, but for everybody else. We can do that. I just, I worry that it's so close to the beginning of the year that. But, but I'm, I'm open.
What say you guys?
I'm on the 30th.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a.
30th, if it, if it makes Melissa more comfortable. Thank you.
So August 30th. Mr. Renary, is that good with you?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. So we have a date, we have a plan.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm looking forward to it. Okay, let's move on to our Board Consent Agenda items. First is curriculum and instruction. Would someone like to make a motion to approve consent, curriculum consent agenda items? E1 through 6. Dr. Eckers, second, Ms. Baruch, any discussion?
I just want to say that even given the pandemic, I'm very happy to see, I make this announcement every year, so this shouldn't be any different. Very happy to see the district moving forward with even more curricular options for kids at all different levels and interests. And, and thank you for pursuing that, the statistics, the, the computers, the, the, the engineering. All these things that we're doing are, are very good for kids. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eckers. Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
And with me makes seven. Next is the Personnel Consent Agenda items. Would someone like to make a motion to approve Personnel items? F1 through 6, I'm sorry, 1 through 5. Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Tell? Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz? And with me makes seven, nothing. Thank you, Ms. Benowitz. And with me makes seven, nothing. Next is Business Agenda items. Would someone like to make a motion to approve Business Agenda items? G1 through 9, please. Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Baruch, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell?
Yes.
Ms. Napolitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce? Dr. Luce? Dr. Luce?
Yes, sorry. I thought I was...
No problem. Ms. Benowitz?
Yes.
And me makes seven, nothing. Thank you. Next, we're coming to the second public commentary section. This section is for items that are open to the public. Again, just like the first, people are gonna be limited to three minutes to address the board, and we're gonna end it the earlier of three minutes or no one else seeking to address the board. If you would, please use your raised hand feature, and Ms. Baruch will call upon you to unmute yourself. I know I mentioned it previously, just one more time. Please note, we're not, we can't, not that we're not going to, we can't respond to things in the chat. So, take the opportunity to either ask now your questions, or again, please feel free to email the board at boe@emufsd.us, and the proper person will get back to you in a timely fashion. Ms. Baruch, I turn it to you to get a raised hand going.
Sure. Jake Schnebaum. You can unmute yourself? There you go.
Okay. I want to thank everyone for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. But I also do want to acknowledge that I'm concerned about the lack of recognition for the issues that I want to speak about. And as much as I enjoyed the conversation about, you know, what time works best for everyone to go on the board retreat, I do feel like that time might have been better spent addressing the racial justice concerns that have been posed to the board and the administration. I'm here because I have been witnessing a huge change in our community, and that change has allowed a lot of our community members to voice their opinions, their experiences, and their concerns. And I know, based on my experience in the district, and my talking to other people that go to the district, that there are many students that do not feel adequately protected or safe in this community. And I think we would be failing as a community if we did not take action to address that. I started with a group of other alumni, an open letter petition to address the district and board, to show public support in the community for these issues. And over 1,000 members of this community, relatives, friends, signed on in support and wrote their own experience. You know, this is not something that is going to change overnight, but this is absolutely something that needs to be addressed and needs to be addressed soon. I'm aware that changes have occurred, and I know that this board and this administration is different than previous boards and administrations, and has done much more to make progress within our community. It's very clear. It's appreciated by members of the district, and it's clear that people on the board and administration do care. But I hope that that level of caring does not stop when protests stop appearing on the news. I hope that this concern does not go away when there are not students posing petitions, because as much as we like to pride ourselves on the diversity of our community, that diversity is not reflected in our staff. I know that in my 12 years, I had zero black educators. I know that in my 12 years, I had less than five, nine white educators. And I know that many of the educators in our district are not given the proper resources to teach about race and to teach about injustice in the way that is a socially responsible way. We are facing one of the biggest civil rights movements in modern history. And for us to say, well, this is what we've done so far, and we're proud of that work, is just missing the mark. It is. We have so much further to go. There are students that have been faced with swastikas, the N-word, constant microaggressions, asking why are they acting autistic? Or how do they like their curry? There are students that are facing this, and there is no access channel for those students to voice their concerns, to feel safe in the district. So, there needs to be more done. We have proposed resources and changes, like establishing a committee on this amongst the other dozens of committees.
Jake, I hate to cut you off, but it is your three minutes. I do really appreciate you coming here to speak tonight and share your thoughts. I'm certain, because we had to cut you off, unfortunately, we will hear from you again. So, I thank you for that in the future as well.
Thank you.
And I know that you had sent an email that was responded, and you've noted that in what you've said tonight as well. And I would agree, and I think Dr. Card has said many times on many topics, we can always do better, and that is what we strive for here. And I think that we've started that movement in that direction, and you're right, we're not done yet. And it is not an overnight process, but it is something that we work towards. And I know have started that ball rolling, and there is much more to do.
Thank you.
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Melnick just said, and to also say to you, Jake, that you're the first step in moving mountains, right? The fact that you're here this evening and you're willing to speak truth to power, if you will, and share about your concerns for your community puts us in a better space. It puts us in a better space because all the adults that are here right now heard you and heard you loud and clear that things have to change in our school community to ensure that no student, no adult in our community ever feels disrespected because of who they love, the color of their skin, the religion they practice, or where they come from. We could speak a lot about diversity, but actions speak louder than words. And our commitment, or at least my commitment, as long as I'm the superintendent of schools, working with this Board of Education and central administration, we're going to continue to do the work of cultural competency because it's necessary. It's necessary because it matters. It matters to you, and that's why we must do this work. So, thank you once again for coming out this evening and sharing with us in public your concerns about your community, because guess what? It's going to make a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you. I do appreciate that and look forward to working together going forward.
Thank you very much. Ms. Baruch?
Yes, next is Mary Zaradich. You go ahead and unmute. There you go.
Hi. I'm also an alumni of East Meadow schools. I've been in East Meadow my entire life, and I want to just echo the words that Jake just mentioned about experiences that my classmates had at the schools that weren't properly handled by educators or that the educators didn't have the experience or the training to handle these kinds of situations. I really appreciate the sentiment that the district just gave right now, and Dr. Card mentioning that, his dedication towards creating these changes. I think that's huge. I do hope that the school continues to speak about this. And one thing I wanted to bring up, and hopefully the district could agree to this, is to create an entire board meeting, maybe centering around this thing, and speaking about these specific changes that they're dedicating so that the entire school district and parents really get the message. And I think another big part of that is spreading this word, because right now, there are 82 people in this meeting. And there are tens of thousands of people in this town that pay taxes to these schools. So, we need to really make this open to the public, make this kind of a front issue to our school district, not just have it be the end of a board meeting on Zoom with 82 people. That being said, like I said, I really appreciate all the work that's being put into this, and I look forward to the future of the school district.
Thank you very much, and thank you for speaking today.
One last thing before we move forward. Thank you very much, Mary. I have a picture of you when you graduated. It's nice to see you here. One of the things that we have talked about is the possibility of conducting a forum, a forum to talk about social justice issues, implicit bias, and the work that we need to do around cultural competency in our district. And just as an FYI for both you and Jake, because Jake mentioned this about our district and our staff representing or not representing the student body. Just as an FYI, one of the things Mr. Russo has been committed to doing, who's, Mr. Russo is the Human Resources Assistant Superintendent, is really reaching out and going beyond our district's boundaries to engage in job fairs that focus on diversity. As a matter of fact, Mr. Russo and I attended a session back in February. Had it not been for COVID, we would have also attended a job fair related to interviewing and investigating the possibilities of minorities in the district. I know Dr. Pizzo is currently involved in developing a job training program with different facets of the community to reach out to minority students to support their pursuits in terms of jobs throughout the district. So, I'm sharing this because I'm really excited that the two of you are here, and I look forward to continuing this work with you. So, if you guys can, reach out to my office, send me your contact information, and we're going to get started together to plan. All right?
Can I say something? Mary and Jake, I just want to thank you both for being more adult than most of the adults in this world today.
I echo that.
Yes.
I'd like to also say that East Meadow has produced some amazing students, two of which are very dear to my heart that I'm looking at. And I want you to know, you are as much a part of this community as everyone else, and you are our future, and you are our hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baruch?
Kim Moravich.
Hi.
Hi.
I really just want to say thank you. As a teacher, my husband's a first responder. I think he's done a great job. I appreciate you opening up for everybody, and I know how hard you're working, because we're doing the same. And it's not an easy task to go from zero to 100 overnight. So, I just, I think you guys really need accolades, because this is not an easy thing for you guys to put together. And as an educator, I understand it, because I'm trying to do the same thing. So, thank you for all your hard work, and thank you for opening up for everybody to see their piece. That's it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Baruch?
For the second time tonight, Jonathan Laco.
Laco.
You only get one shot. I didn't expect to do this, but Jake and Mary, bravo, Zulu, you guys. I'll tell you, I was in your shoes back in 1992, and I'm still here giving these people a hard time. Still here giving them a hard time, and some of them were underclassmen for me. I'm giving them a hard time, too. So, keep on doing what you're doing. That's actually really outstanding. But the real purpose of, you know, and I know we can't really address what goes on in the chat box, I think it's an important thing to bring it out, and I don't see anybody else bringing it up. The gap that we have in our plan, and I think it's something, you know, it's the elephant in the room that we have acknowledged, is childcare and the alternate day. And I know that, again, it's a work in progress. One of the things that I anticipate in this process is that if we do have to go to this alternate learning situation, where it's not going to be full-time at school, the governor, as part of that executive order, will direct the school districts and OFCS to provide childcare, and we'll have to figure that all out. I know that the people that have come up with this plan haven't done that blind, but without that guidance, and I know a lot of the people, that's what they're asking. I said it's a village, because I want to make my plan now. I'm in a maybe a little bit different situation than most. I want to be ready for whatever comes, because if I'm ready for the worst-case scenario, the best-case scenario is gonna be, hey, it's awesome. And if you can do that for your situation, that's what I really mean by it takes a village. And I know it's been brought up a couple of times tonight. But start thinking about what your plan does look like. And I think, and again, it's the old assumption, but if we are under an executive order, which is really what it would take from a government, and for those of you that don't know, before I was in healthcare, I was in government, the executive order would be required in order for us to have to wind up doing this. And covered in that, the governor's been pretty thorough about childcare, particularly for first responders. I know a bunch of people have mentioned in their text box, single parents. There's gonna be provisions for that, and we'll have to figure it all out. But I think it's important that it gets brought up in public. And again, like Jake and Mary, I'm that voice for people sometimes. So, I'm just acting as a conduit for what I'm seeing here, and that's my piece this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Laco. A pleasure to hear from you once, let alone twice in one night. Ms. Baruch?
Wendy Shay.
Ms. Shay?
Good evening, everybody. I just want to, first of all, as everybody is saying, thank you. You guys are always doing everything you can. You're not making everyone happy, but you're doing everything you possibly can to achieve that. So, I personally thank you, and I know there are a lot of people out there that do feel that way, that cannot come to the forums or come to meetings or say anything. So, we do thank you. I just want to confirm one thing that Dr. Casamento mentioned, and I think Dr. Card mentioned as well. The plan, hopefully, going back to what we want to call normal, does that, it does include extracurricular activities, like sports and driver's ed? I got a very eager high school kid that's dying for a driver's license.
Dr. Card's silence would indicate I'm answering this question. So, at this time, I do know that Section 8 is actually gonna dictate athletics. That is...
Yes, we're hearing that. But if they say yes, you guys say yes, it's not something that we would challenge within the district?
No. And no discussion of that at all?
Okay.
The other thing that you talked about extracurriculars, extracurriculars where we could social distance, absolutely. Some of the, that would be on a case-by-case basis, really. I mean, like a musical, right? So, that's an extracurricular. Again, singing, spreading event.
Driving?
I can't give you a blank.
Muted yourself.
Yes, I did. I can't give you a blanket answer on all extracurriculars, but we're gonna try. Because let me tell you, when I did that student focus group, I said to the, I said to the high school kids, I said, what would worry you most if we had to go back to this? And they're, and like, they all said, my mental health. I need my sports. I need my extracurriculars.
And did I mention a driver's license for a 17-year-old?
Yeah, Dr. Pizzo could speak to that real quick.
Yes, and I know your concerns. I did speak with Mr. Brennan. The, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that the way the timeline worked out, we didn't think it was appropriate to continue to hold the money of the people who had their children signed up for the spring. We were hopeful initially that we would be able to accommodate the students over the summer. But many of the students who we would have looked to accommodate in the spring may not be available for this program in the fall, as they would be moving on with their education. And also, it gets to the point where it's no longer a value once they, you know, once they turn 18. It does change the dynamic. If we are able to get started, the people who were, the young people who were in the pipeline for the program in the spring would be right at the top of the list, and we would accommodate them. But without any kind of compelling information that we were going to be able to offer that, you know, we did offer the money back. But we'd be glad to, if the program starts up, we'd be glad to take that money back and...
Oh, you have lots of my money already. You haven't refunded yet. That's a different story.
Process, but we are, we are in the process of sending that out. You are correct. We did not get that out yet. But we will be refunding that, because, like I said, we can't just hold your money indefinitely. But we'd be glad to take it back if, two months from now, things change. We would love to get the program started.
Okay, so initially, the plan is to attempt to have it, if it's allowed?
Yeah, right now, it's not, there's nothing in place. And I know, you know, there's, there were other districts, but we would, if we were able to start up, we would, like I said, everyone would maintain their spot in line by taking the refund. The students aren't losing their spot online. But, you know, if we have the opportunity to offer it, like I said, we'd be glad to start it right up and then take the funds back. And hopefully, we have a decision. Hopefully, that comes to pass, but we'll have to see what happens.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jake.
We have Heather Lawrence.
Ms. Lawrence?
Heather, just unmute yourself.
Evening, everyone. Thank you. I want to start by saying, as a New York City Department of Education principal, as well as a parent of two elementary school children in East Meadow, Jake and Mary, you should be very proud of yourselves for speaking tonight. It was really brave of you. Jake and Mary, you should be very proud of yourselves for speaking tonight. It was really brave of you. I am dealing with a lot of these issues myself in the school system in New York City. And I just want to make a suggestion that our district look into, for the administrators, for the faculty, potentially looking at Glenn Singleton's book Courageous Conversations About Race and discussing the Four Agreements as well as the Compass. I think that that might be a really nice way of our adults embarking on this journey so that we could really have discussions with the families, with the community, with our students. Our students do need to talk about this. That's the first part. If anybody wants to discuss that with me at another time, I've been doing a lot of work in the city. I'd be happy to have a conversation. Secondly, I just wanted to address, again, as that balance of mom and educator. I commend the East Meadow School District. We're in East Meadow now for three years. We moved here from the city. I commend everyone. It was a horrible task that we all had to undertake, both personally and professionally, moving from the brick and mortar to the remote world. And East Meadow did a phenomenal job. My one concern moving forward does become the potential of any form of remote learning, whether it be in a hybrid model or 100% remote, as we will find out, whatever the governor chooses. My concern becomes the amount of time, especially with the younger ones. I can't speak to what the older students were doing. I don't have middle school or high school children. The younger ones, though, in both grades that I have, I experienced, we're only online for live teaching for a half an hour twice a week. That's one hour per week of live instruction. And I have to say, I'm grateful that I am an educator where I was able to pick up some of the pieces and help with that. But I do, I worry, and I know that there is a balance because especially the younger ones, we do want to limit screen time. It has so many different physical effects on children. But I just want to express that I am concerned that there does need to be a little bit more of a push for live teaching if we do wind up in the remote world to whatever extent. And that's it. So thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Kevin Martin.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi. So I'll just keep this quick since you only have so little time. Also, an alum with Jake and Mary, current student at Stanford right now. And one thing I'd like to say is that in my experience at East Meadow, I cannot count the ways in which racism was rampant in our community. And not just the overt racism that we like to commit ourselves to fighting, but so much implicit bias that, yes, Superintendent Card has begun talking about addressing. But in our curriculum, in our founding, in the omission of things from our curriculum and in our teachers' behavior and our punishments. And it has to go further than just words. And I know you've said that. But I'm curious, is there any plan on having oversight for this? Because, you know, Jake, Mary and I are not students anymore and we're not parents. You know, the types of people who have these concerns and are here to address them are also not people who can monitor whether or not things are happening. And so I'm just curious, what specifically are your plans to make sure that these changes are addressed at every level and that students also take part in them?
Hi, Kevin. It's nice to see you. One of the reasons why I start off with the cultural competency framework continuum is because my past experience has taught me that changing people's beliefs and behaviors is an inside job. And usually it requires people to look internally and understand who they are and where they're at in terms of the cultural competency continuum. Implicit bias is a challenge in every aspect of our lives because we don't actually know we're engaging in it. I'm going to give you an example. When I was a high school teacher, I taught in the Harborfields School District. I was teaching a class and a kid said to me, hey, wait a minute. Mr. Card, why do you have only the work of girls up on your wall? And I said to her, what are you talking about? I said to him, what are you talking about? He said, yeah, the only work that you have on the wall is that of girls. And the entire class started looking around and they noticed, oh yeah, you only have the work of girls up on the wall. So unknowingly, I was engaging in implicit bias. And what happened was students had to point it out to me. One of the issues that we have is this discomfort in talking about racial issues. Because people become uncomfortable. And that's what we have to get over. Because if we don't get over that discomfort related to talking about issues related to race, we will never get to where we need to be. So once again, I'm going to reiterate what I said. It's important for you guys, Kevin and Jake and Mary, to be engaged in this conversation. Because sometimes within the institution, it's very hard to create change. But you guys were inside observers who've left and now you're coming back with your experiences multiplied and you're able to articulate things that you didn't really like when you were here. And so in order to improve our community, we need the three of you and whoever else is in your group to engage with us in this conversation so that we can move this district forward. So I applaud you. I applaud once again, all three of you for being here and forcing us to have this conversation in public. And hopefully, Mary, the next time it won't be at the end of the meeting. It'll be a forum dedicated to having this, Heather, courageous conversation, if you will, right? Because talking about race requires a lot of courage. And talking about our hidden biases and how we grew up and the things that we were taught when we were growing up is a very difficult conversation because it challenges our very being and people are uncomfortable with that. Last thing I'm going to say, when I got here three years ago, I tried to do a survey. A survey that attempted to have people respond in a disaggregated way about who you are racially, who you are sexually. And the pushback, blowback that I got from that, I was shocked and stunned that in 2017, folks were still somewhat, I guess, ashamed to be asked the question, what is your racial identity? What is your sexual identity in 2017? But I'm glad that you guys are here because now it'll push us to do exactly that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight. We look forward to working with you in the future as well. Ms. Baruch? That's it? An end of a meeting. We are going to go into executive session. We are not going to come out to do any votes. So we won't be coming back to this forum. However, I do want to thank everyone who attended tonight. For those of you who knew people who were not able to get into the room, which would have definitely been the case for almost every single person had we had this live at the Salisbury Center. This was recorded and is still being recorded and will be available for viewing later. Additionally, please feel free to reach out to the district with any questions, concerns that you have. And the appropriate person will get back to you in a timely manner.
Before you break, before you break, Mr. Melnick, I just wanted to tell Kevin, Jake and Mary if they could reach out to my office. Because I'm really interested in just sitting down in a socially distanced way and having a conversation about how we could work together moving forward in the future. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Card. Are there any board member announcements before we go to exec session?
I just want to say that I'm very proud of everybody for coming tonight. The young people who came and I got to watch some of them grow up through their high school years and clearly turned into fine young adults and keep doing what you're doing and trying to better your community. And to everybody else who came out tonight to talk about the school openings and everything else. I just, I'd like to just thank everybody for their participation and just ask everybody's patience in all the unknowns that we have. And I trust that our administration, along with this board and the community, will certainly put together something that is as acceptable as possible, given whatever the state or the county or wherever it is throws at us this year. So just thank you for everybody's work and stay healthy, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Eckers. Any other board member announcements?
I would just echo exactly what Scott said. He said exactly what I was going to say. So thank you to everybody for your contributions, for your input, for your concerns and for working with us in trying to navigate these tricky times.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Luce. There are no other board member announcements. Would someone like to make a motion to return to executive session? Ms. Baruch, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? Good. We'll go down the list. Ms. Baruch?
Ms. Melnick, for the purpose of discussing collective.
Oh, I'm sorry, for this purpose of discussing collective bargaining. Thank you, Mr. Rannieri. You have saved the day yet again. Ms. Baruch?
Yes.
Dr. Eckers?
Yes.
Ms. Tell? Ms. DePaulitano?
Yes.
Dr. Luce?
Yes.
Ms. Benowitz?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's seven, nothing. We will move to exec session for collective bargaining. Everyone, I would say get home safe, but I'm hoping you're already there. So have a great night and a great summer and we will see you at our next meeting. Thank you.
Yeah.
I can't log off until everybody goes.
Can we take like two minutes?
Hold up one second. Two minutes break?
Yeah. For one thing.
We're not going to start until you come back, Scott.
All right. Thanks. Be right back.
And plus you have to log into a different meeting, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, Dr. Card.
All right, see you in a second. I just have to get everybody out then I could move over. Uh-oh. Let's see.